April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, City Council Regular Meeting in order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the requirement of corporate standards, one nation under God, indivisible, free, democratic, and just.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chilton?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge? Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Carey is absent. Student Representative Knowles.
She is coming in the door.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Ms. Hutchings, may I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting minutes, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, special council meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one two, amending Soldatna Municipal Code two point two eight point zero eight zero, discipline and discharge regarding the removal of discussion records and written warnings from an employee personnel file introduced by the city manager to be heard, a public hearing on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Other items, action memorandum, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, request for an excused absence from the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular city council meeting from Councilmember Carey, and that is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to speak on the Consent Agenda or the Agenda, our Consent Agenda items that were just read? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised in the Zoom. So, bring it back. Having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none. Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. The next item on the agenda is item four, Presentation with Prior Notice, the twenty twenty-two Special Olympics USA Games, Darryl Megan and the Team Alaska swimmer and Dr. Ned Megan. Yep, please.
You think since there's two of us, it's okay if we just stand?
Yeah. Well, there's no chirp.
Oh, okay, either way.
So, so you want to introduce yourself? Go ahead. Okay, well, this is my, this is Darryl Megan, and I'm Ned Megan. I've got the honor of being Darryl's father. Darryl was born in Soldatna and has been raised here, so high graduate, and he's come a long way. He had the honor of being named to the twenty twenty-two Special Olympics Alaska Team, which is going to the National Games in Orlando, the fifth to the twelfth of June. He's the only athlete from the Central Peninsula, but he'll be joining seventy other athletes and coaches traveling to Orlando. They will join about five thousand five hundred other athletes and coaches, twenty thousand volunteers, and they're estimating a hundred twenty-five thousand spectators. They will participate in some of the nineteen sports offered by the Special Olympics. And of course, his mother and I will be traveling down to cheer them on, and we've gotten great support from the, from the city of Soldat, from people in the city of Soldatna and surrounding. You know, Darryl's pretty well-known in the community, but, you know, the, it takes a team, it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a team to support an athlete. Couldn't, we couldn't have done it without some people here, Gregory Weisenberg, his main staff, Stan Vogel, who's worked with him, Holly Scott, who's his care coordinator, and then his trainer, Angie Brennan, but also the whole community has pitched in. It's been, I, not, I can't name everybody, but certainly, I mean, Elks Lodge twenty-seven oh six has been, has been very generous, as have Bob and Gina and Penny, Peggy Mullins, and now, part of the reason we're here today is the city of Soldatna, and we're very appreciative of all the support, both just, certainly some financial and trinkets, but also just good wishes of people. It's, this community is, I've always been, I've been here, living here thirty-three years, and I've always been impressed with how generous people are here. And that's my short presentation. Happy to, if there are any questions, Darryl, I could answer.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Darryl, one of the things we understand is that you enjoy doing pin exchanges at the event, and so we've got you a few pins so that you can exchange them with everyone else that's participating.
Just a few, huh?
There's a few thousand. We're very, we're very proud of you, and it's a good thing you're a swimmer.
Way to go, Darryl.
It's gonna be very hot in Orlando.
Congratulations, Darryl. Darryl's gonna make a big splash in Orlando.
Good luck to you.
Congratulations on all the hard work you've done as well.
Thank you.
Good job, good luck.
Bravo.
If I might, Mayor Whitney.
We're gonna have to put in for excess baggage, it looks like.
You probably will.
He weighs like fifty pounds.
We'll make it.
And Mr. Chilton has something, a question.
I have a comment, too.
I was just gonna say congratulations to Darryl for all the hard work that you've put in to get to where you are, and I'm very excited for you, and I know you'll represent our community well, so congratulations again.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, Dr. Megan and Darryl, for being here. You went to school with my son at both elementary school, middle school, high school, and as did your sister, so it's been fun to watch you grow up, and as I mentioned, you're gonna make a big splash in Orlando.
Like I said, it's a good thing you're a swimmer, because it's gonna be hot in Orlando. Moving along to the next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations, items other than those appearing on the agenda, and three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members of, from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber that would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Zoom, and I see no hands raised there on Zoom. So, moving on to the next item on the agenda is number six, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And we see Mr. Cox. Let me finish one other thing here. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Go ahead, Mr. Cox.
All right, thank you. And first, congratulations. I've known Darryl for quite a while. My mother-in-law worked with him for several years, Catherine, and so, congratulations on your trip and good luck. So, and as far as assembly items go, is we have been pretty busy. A couple of the ones I wanted to highlight is, one, we do have an ordinance coming up on five-three for the hearing, and what that's for is exempting independent power producers from a portion of the property tax. Essentially, when you figure it all out, it's only a portion of the property tax of the, of the exact mill rate, the four point seven part of the mill rate, and it's only the part that does not, isn't designated for schools, and so it equates to about, well, exactly, two point oh five would be the exemption on the property, if that goes through, and that would be for a fifteen-year term, and that's as written right now. I'm, I'm assuming there might be some amendments and some changes to that as we go. That will be on the fifth, or the third of May. Another one that we had was a Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two three, and it was a resolution supporting House Bill three sixty-seven by Representative Gillum, and what it would do is it would take out wording from a section of the Alaska Code having to do with the Planning Commission, and that did pass unanimously. What that would take out is commission members shall be apportioned so that the number of members from the home rule in first-class cities reflects the portion of the borough population residing in home rule in first-class cities located in the borough. It would also take out, except that a member from a home rule or first-class city shall be selected from a list of recommend, recommendations submitted by the council. What that would do is take out that portion of code to allow, I think the idea is to allow boroughs to have a little bit more flexibility, and like our borough, there are some that would like to go to nine. Just as a comment for myself, I did vote on it, but I made it very clear that I am okay with us. I, I think having more local control is smart. I think having the flexibility is good. It does not necessarily mean that I personally think that we need to go from fourteen to nine. It, it would be something that I would have to look at and see what the merits are of that at that time, and I would definitely take into account ideas from the city and, and what they think, because this is gonna directly affect cities if that change were made. One of the other ones we have is, we will be submitting for, for our vote in October, the, well, there'll be a hearing on four nineteen next Tuesday for submitting apportionment plans to the voters, but that is going to be most likely, unless something gets changed. I, I don't necessarily see it changing, but the recommendation is that we bring forward a choice of nine or eleven, and that is by statute that we have to give two options, and so we will be putting that at nine or eleven. That's probably what voters will be seeing this fall, and then they will get to choose a nine or eleven assembly and school board at this time. Those two would be connected to that. We have been working on an ordinance to amend code regarding material sites, permits, applications, conditions, and procedures. It is definitely a lengthy process. We are doing special meetings that the Assembly is doing for probably the next several meetings, and, you know, I don't see this as a, as a small thing. It will be a pretty big change. Most of those items that will be changed will, what we're trying to accomplish is align it more with what state statutes does. There are some things that don't align directly with that, wording, things like that. There are some definitions that need to change, and then to give more definition on direction for reclamation, well-monitoring, noise, dust, those kinds of things, will be included in that as well, and it, it's gonna be a pretty big one, so I do see that coming forward. As of right now, that's, those are the big ones that we have. We don't have anything else coming up directly for the city. I am glad to see that there was at least some sort of resolution with getting somebody on the Planning Commission from the city. I do appreciate what was done so that could happen, and so I will leave it at that unless you have questions.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Assemblymember Cox. With the vote on whether it should be a nine or an eleven-member body, will there be maps to accompany that, or will those come after a decision is made?
I've been told that traditionally there has always been tentative maps put into the voter pamphlet. I have already made it very clear that I personally oppose that, and I oppose it in the fact that they're, they are tentative. We have an actual group. The way that procedure goes is, right now, all the question is, is do we want nine or eleven? And then after that, there is a new committee put together that actually draws those lines. So I think it's a little bit of, a little bit of an assumption to put those in there and have people look at those and maybe be voting accordingly to that, but that is just my opinion only, that is not the opinion of the Assembly, and it's actually not something we're voting on, is, is that was not part of the vote, is the vote is just to put that in, and I asked if that's what would be done. I was told by the Clerk's office it would be, and that's when I made my statement that I do not agree with that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Ruffridge? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Administrative Reports, American Rescue Plan, Act, ARPA Grant Funds, report from the Administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There's a report from our Finance Director, Melanie Imholtz, on page seven of the packet, and this provides some additional detail to questions that were asked of me at a previous meeting regarding the specific terms and eligibility dates for the ARPA funding. So, Ms. Imholtz has included in the packet, we've got, of the one point one four two million that was allocated to the city, half of that funding is, has already been transmitted to us, so we've received the five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars already. The second tranche was expected to come about a year later, so we're thinking sometime around August is when we'll receive that second tranche of funding. As we've talked about, kind of generally, this funding is, its eligibility is broader, much broader than previous COVID funding that the city had received, and it can be used for general government services. She's included several bullet points of specific items it can't be used for, but generally, anything that the city would fund through its own revenue streams could be funded with this funding. They, the funds need to be obligated by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-four, so I anticipate that means a purchase order made or a contract entered into, but they actually have until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six to be expended, so it's also a much longer timeline than we were working under, for example, with the CARES Act funds. The council had expressed some interest in having a dialogue or even potentially a work session on the programming and, and providing some guidance on the use of those funds. We had already had a work session scheduled for tonight that, that was time-sensitive in terms of answering questions about the water sewer that we discussed earlier, but we do have next council meeting available with no other conflicts. If there's interest in the council requesting a work session, or if the mayor wanted to request that we schedule a work session, we could, we could certainly accommodate that. We wanted to at least get this memo in the packet to answer those questions that I was not able to answer during the meeting last time. In terms of a recommendation, we had not, I think I mentioned, we had not been working behind the scenes to develop new grant programs or bring those recommendations forward like we had done under CARES, but we are certainly happy to do that if that's the will of the council and the direction that we receive. Instead, because this funding's already appropriated, what we have done is, is bring forward some requests for some specific city needs. One of them was, I had identified that this funding might be appropriate for the new contracted services agreement with grant writers, because that's kind of a special, unique need we have right now, given the infrastructure bill's passage, and this is a unique, one-time pot of funding, so it made sense to me that, that that might be a good, a good match for those funds, and so there is a potential award of that agreement in the packet tonight and that we're recommending that a portion of the ARPA funds be allocated and set aside for that use. The other one, that's a more urgent need that's also within the agenda tonight, is spruce bark beetles, and we've got an update when we get to the appropriate point on the agenda, can talk about the timing of the current grant we'd identified and what the current level of urgency is in terms of need to get some of those hazard trees dealt with. So we're presenting this really to start that dialogue with the council and get some direction, and I recognize that we're doing that at the same time we are bringing forward specific requests and recommendation for use of that funding. But that really concludes my report. I believe Ms. Imholtz's on the phone if there's specific questions that would be best directed to her, otherwise I'd also be happy to answer questions to the council. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? I do have one question. With the two resolutions that are up in front of us right now for the spruce bark beetle and the grant, how much of those funds have been basically allocated?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So, currently, we have not authorized the use of any of those funds, but I think we identified approximately a hundred and fifty thousand in our request for the grant writing services. That number will be highly variable, because I don't have a firm timeline on when we would hit that budget mark, specifically because the grant writing services will be on a time and materials basis for some general ongoing needs, but then really the bulk of that expense would come if we identify specific grant programs that we want to pursue. That would be the more time-intensive, expensive part of that. So until we start this effort and this, this partnership and identify programs that might be a good fit for our, our projects, when we start that, we'll have a much better sense of the budget, but a hundred and fifty thousand was what we presented in, in terms of our recommendation for that set aside. I'm gonna give you the same type of answer, unfortunately, with the spruce bark beetles, because what we're asking at this point is to be allowed to go out to bid for that work. When we get those bids back, we'll have a sense of the budget. Our original grant request included some budget estimates that were performed by the forester who consulted with, with us on that grant prep. Mr. Carmichael has included in his memo some rough, rough estimates, but it's not a budget estimate that we bring to you with, with the same level of confidence that we normally would. I think in this case, because it's a quick, a quick turnaround, we're asking for some work to be done, depending on the scheduling and the availability of those, those firms, we will soon find out, but I think we're in the couple hundred thousand dollar range for the, the tree removal. So those two items together, looking at approximately three hundred and fifty, potentially. The other, the other thing I think we mentioned is that we will continue to seek out other funding sources for the, the tree removal, and if we're successful in doing that, then it won't, it won't be necessary to use the ARPA funds.
Thank you. Moving right along, we'll go into item number eight, Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearings, Testimony Limited to Three Minutes Per Speaker. The first one will be Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven, Amending Soldatna Municipal Code two point zero four point zero five zero, compensation for city council, and two point zero five point zero three zero, compensation of the mayor to adjust monthly salary amounts introduced by the mayor. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. My report, I think I pretty much covered everything in the, the memo that I signed passed out along with this ordinance. From the last time those, that ordinance has changed, there's been quite a change in, in the way things operate in the city. Things have been, have become more complex, more critical, and a lot more time is being involved for all the council members, both here during meetings and also in their off time. So that was the reason I proposed it, and that is the end of my report. So the public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven? Seeing none, we'll move to the Zoom and see if we have any hands raised, and there's no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak on this item, the item is back before the council. Any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have five yes votes. Oh, I apologize, you have four yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. Ordinance two zero two-two dash zero zero seven passes on a four-to-one vote. Moving on to ordinance, the second item is Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, Amending Soldatna Municipal Code two point five zero point zero three zero, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to Increase Membership and Meeting Frequency, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move to enact Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the Administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This ordinance comes to you out of a conversation I had with Andrew a while back when we were trying to figure out how to engage our Parks and Recreation Board more fully into the decision-making of the city. As you know, parks are such a tremendous part of the services we provide, and the board had been meeting quarterly, so I posed the question to Andrew of if, looking at the meeting frequency and the makeup of the board would facilitate more engagement and more timely engagement, and he took that discussion to the board, they, they talked about it, and ultimately, I think they came away with a recommendation that they did, they did support adding an additional person to that, what had been, I think, a five-person board, as well as allowing broader representation for the additional board seat to be outside the city limits. He and I then discussed it and, and got together with Breck on, on drafting this, and ultimately brought forward a recommendation to increase the board from five to seven, and where one person currently can be outside the city limits, at seven, it would allow two non-residents. That's consistent with how we treat other boards like planning and zoning, for example, where we recognize the benefit of having folks participate, not just city residents, but other users or stakeholders, and in addition to that expanded membership, this ordinance would increase the meeting frequency, going from quarterly per year to once every other month, so scheduling six meetings a year. I think that will allow the board to be able to advise, respond, discuss more opportunities throughout the year, whereas the current quarterly system really leaves large gaps between meetings where decisions are being made, and I think that lends itself more to us reporting out to them what had been done rather than engaging them. So, with, Mr. Carmichael's here with us tonight if there's questions for him, and I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak on the item, it's back before the council. Any council comments? Ms. Hutchings?
You know, I sat on that board for probably fourteen years, and I think at that time, once a quarter was good, because there was also a time when we would cancel that quarterly meeting. I think that every two months would probably be better at this point, because our parks are exceedingly busy. I do like seeing the fact that we will have one person at least from outside the city, because even though they aren't the city, a lot of those places along Funny River Road are very active in our community, so I think that'll be a great opportunity for somebody to sit and provide input for us.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll have a call, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-008 passes on a five zero vote. Moving on to the next item is Ordinance 2022-009, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $128,000 in the Equipment Replacement Fund for the Purchase of Two Replacement Police Patrol Vehicles Introduced by the City Manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact Ordinance 2022-009, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $128,000 in the Equipment Replacement Fund for the Purchase of Two Replacement Police Vehicles.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. We're requesting this appropriation which would allow us to really get our name on and secure two vehicles that are in the queue to be outfitted in the way that they would serve us as new patrol vehicles. One of the vehicles is one that we had already identified for replacement, and actually the council had approved it in the FY '23 Equipment Replacement Fund. So the year starting July 1, the council had already appropriated and identified $63,000 for that replacement of the vehicle. The other vehicle is due to an accident at no fault of our own officers, but the vehicle was totaled. So this is a new need as a result of that accident. And what we're requesting is the funding to secure both of them now, and we would, with the intent that we would come back in the mid-biennium budget process and essentially undo that $63,000 that had already been identified next year. I want to commend and thank Lieutenant Cant. He was extremely resourceful. And as you know, purchasing vehicles is difficult, long lead times. But he had started making phone calls and through one of his phone calls to a representative at the state, they had already months ago put in an order for two vehicles that they were willing to release to us if we had, if we had the need and had the ability to put our name on those. So that's partially the request to move forward with both at this time is to be able to secure those existing vehicles that are the ones we need, the right kind, and already essentially in the order, in the queue for procurement. The ordinance identifies funding, which is insurance proceeds. And since we developed this packet, Melanie Imholtz, our Finance Director, was diligent in her follow-up conversations with the insurance company. And there's a request that we'll be making to amend this ordinance as a result of her getting them to cover additional costs, namely the replacement of some of the equipment, the radios, the technology that's inside the vehicle. So not only are they giving us the replacement value of the vehicle, but the cost for the additional new equipment that's going to have to be outfitted in the new vehicle. Other than that, I think that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. A public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. If you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience would like to speak on Ordinance 2022-009? Seeing none, take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised. Any discussion from the, well, somebody has a motion to amend?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chilton?
So following up on the report from the administration on this pertaining to the increase in proceeds we'll be getting from insurance, I would move at the request of administration to amend Section 1 by increasing the insurance proceeds to amount to $23,709 and decreasing the amount of the appropriation of fund balance to $104,291. The total amount of the increased estimated revenues and the amount of the increased appropriations both remain the same at $128,000.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Any discussion on the amendment? Vice Mayor Parker?
I would just like to commend our Finance Director for her diligence in working with the insurance companies to increase the funding on the insurance.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote on the amendment.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. The amendment passes on a five zero vote. Back to the main motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-090, excuse me, 009 passes on a five zero vote. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2022-010, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $1,750 in the General Fund for a Donation Received from the Soldat Library Friends Introduced by the City Manager. May I have a motion to enact?
I would move to enact Ordinance 2022-010.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This ordinance appropriates, seeks to appropriate $1,750 from the Soldat Library Friends, which, as you know, are very generous in their fundraising and support of our library programs and materials. The packet includes a memo from our library director, Ms. Rachel Nash, and she's here with us tonight. And it outlines the specific items and ways that she is proposing to use these donated funds. I'm sure she'd be happy to answer questions if there are any questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak on item, Ordinance 2022-010? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised. Bring it back to the council. Any council comments? Mr. Chilton?
This may be to the administration or maybe more specifically Rachel. In my time here on the council, it seems like we've had just a series of ordinances re-appropriating funds that we keep getting from the Soldat Friends of the Library. And they've just been such a good organization to us. Do we have any kind of data on the amount of money they've raised for us over the years? Because I feel like it's just got to be a lot.
So I don't have the exact numbers, but ballpark, especially if you're including the expansion project, it's probably, gosh, around 40,000, 50,000, around there. We could get exact numbers. And I think Ms. Queen actually provided some of the statistics. Gosh, it was in December, I believe. So yeah, it's, we're very, very lucky to have them. And what I love is that they are a community group, and so they just show the support of the community for the community's library.
We are indeed very fortunate to have such a supportive group in our community. And I think it really speaks well to the way that library is run, that it draws the support of our community members. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Alls I know is they've raised a lot of money. A lot more than I could do on a garage sale, that's for sure. Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-010 passes on a five zero vote. Move on to the next item on the agenda, Ordinance 2022-011, Accepting Grant Funds from the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development and Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $1,250 in the General Fund to Attend the Public Library Association Conference Introduced by the City Manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
Ordinance 2022-11, Accepting Grant Funds from the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development and Increase Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $1,250 into the General Fund to Attend the Public Library Association Conference.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. These are for grant funds through the state that would be used to offset the cost of sending one of our employees to the biennial, biannual Public Library Association Conference. And I will ask Rachel, does biennial mean once every two years or twice a year?
Every two years.
Okay. Thank you. As you can see that, you know, the state has supported our ongoing professional development needs, and this is a great example of using that resource to further develop our own staff's capacity to the betterment of the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak on Ordinance 2022-011? Seeing none, looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. The matter is now back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-011 passes on a five zero vote. Moving on to new business under item Agenda Nine, Resolutions. Resolution 2022-012, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into a Term Contract with HDR Engineering, Inc. for Grant Consulting Services Introduced by the City Manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to enact Resolution 2022-12?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. As the council knows, we issued a formal request for proposals for qualified firms and individuals to submit proposals for grant writing services. And included in the packet, Mr. Cornelis has identified really the two kind of scopes of work that we identified. The first was ongoing monitoring of grant opportunities and helping develop a strategy related to seeking individual funding for the city's projects that have been identified by the council in our, in our capital improvement plan. And so that task is really going to be ongoing on a time and materials basis. The second task would be grant development, grant writing, and specific project development for individual opportunities that are identified that one of our projects would be eligible for and we believe will be competitive. And so we put together a review team that reviewed the proposals that were received. We had seven proposals, and they were evaluated based on criteria identified in the RFP. Cost was not one of those criteria because this was a qualifications-based solicitation. And we did an initial evaluation as a committee and then held a follow-up interview with several of the highest-ranking firms. And after that interview, are recommending that the council move forward with the award of a term contract to HDR Engineering, Inc. We did ask the city attorney to advise on whether, based on our solicitation, we would be able to award more than one contract. And he confirmed that we are, we would be in fact able to award more than one. But based on our review of this firm's staff that they've identified for the project, their qualifications, their experience, their depth and expertise in this field, we're not recommending that we enter into multiple contracts at this time. So the resolution would authorize us to execute, negotiate and execute that contract with HDR. They're really a global firm, but they've got a strong Alaska presence. Many of their project team is familiar to us. One of the project members was really conducting the grant writing workshop that was held in Anchorage on Tuesday and had also been tasked by AML of providing grant writing services to the state. So those services will be available to all members, but really, this would allow us to have a team really dedicated to our needs and helping us be successful in identifying funding for our projects. We're proposing that the funding be ARPA funds, 150,000 set aside of the previously appropriated ARPA funds for this term contract. And Mr. Cornelis would likely be the one administering this contract on a time and materials basis, as well as, you know, all of our department heads engaging with them on opportunities moving forward. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on Resolution 2022-012? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we're all aware, there are currently a tremendous amount of grant opportunities that exist out there. And as this firm comes online and starts working on Task One for us, of just surveying that field and finding out what opportunities exist that would be applicable for us as a city, my suspicion is that they're going to find a lot of opportunities that they could pursue. And I guess my question to the administration would be if they come back to you and say, okay, we found these 100 different opportunities that exist out there, we have the resources to maybe apply grant writers to go maybe at five of them or whatever that number may be, how are those selected? Is it going to be you and your team that make that decision? Or will there be an opportunity to bring that menu of grant opportunities back to the council in the form of a work session so we can give direction on which ones interest us most to direct this firm to pursue?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. Through the mayor, I don't anticipate that we're going to see those types of numbers in terms of recommendations for programs that we pursue. For an example, the grant that the city is currently applied for through the EDA, we know it's four times overcommitted, meaning there are four times the number of applicants seeking the same funds as we are than funds that exist. And I think the value, the principal value of bringing on a firm like this is going to be their knowledge and expertise in understanding which opportunities are, should be sought after from a competitive standpoint. So there might be opportunities for grants that we are eligible for, but because these are being competed against on a nationwide basis, they will help us look at, look at the projects that are already on our capital list and tell us with a higher level of expertise whether we are going to be competitive. So I don't anticipate having to make decisions about which ones to pursue based on staff limitations or even budget limitations. I think it's going to be more an analysis from their professional standpoint of will our programs likely be competitive based on the very specific guidance of individual programs? We can bring those to the council if that's the wish of the council. Otherwise, we will explore all of the projects that are currently on our adopted five-year capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would like to state a conflict of interest on this. I am in abstain from voting. I periodically do consulting work with HDR, and I'm not involved in grant writing. I do consult with them, and they compensate me, so I'd like to abstain from voting.
You're currently not under contract with them to do anything on grant writing for this, for the city?
That is correct.
So, and you have no financial interest in the company, so I see no, no conflict of interest on this particular item. Forgot where we were at. Did we do, just do the public hearing? Okay. Too many different things going on tonight. Are there any further council comments?
It's just one more.
I do have one. I attended the grant workshop in Anchorage yesterday, and there was a six-hour presentation on grant writing. And it was very intense. It's very complicated. There are so many different grants available out there. Some of them have certain timelines. You have You have to be up on, on that list to find out what's coming up. And it's, it's a full-time job. And HDR made, the young lady probably made most of the presentation in that six-hour session. Very informative, very well put together. And I believe Mr. Chilton has another comment.
No. Just one more thought I had. I know we had the work session prior to this meeting specific on water and sewer extensions outside the city. But looking at the GIS maps that we have of the current distribution systems for water and sewer within city limits, it's easily overlooked how many, we don't have a lot, but there, there are residential districts within the city that still don't have water and/or sewer services. And I've, I've actually had people come to me about this, wanting to know what it would take to get those. And I know we have the framework where they can do some cost sharing with the city, but maybe as, as we begin this exploration process, what grant opportunities out there, maybe just keep in mind the potential need and, and use of, of grant funding to expand sewer and water services to city residents that we already have within the city.
I would very much like, like to see us applying for those grants and working on those very hard. I would also like to see something that we've had on our wish list for a long time, and that's a bridge, pedestrian bridge across the river. It ties in with the, the trail system. There is funds, grant funds available in there for bridges. The question is, would that type of a bridge be something that would, would apply? So there's a lot of things out there and, and roads, road improvements around here, water and sewer. I think those are the types of, types of grants we're going to be looking for. Any other comments from the council? Ms. Queen?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. We will be happy to share with the council the, the matrix when we have that developed and back where they've done their first analysis of, of potential programs, because that'll provide the council with some sense of which of our, which of our projects may likely to be funded through grants and on what timetable. So we'll be happy to communicate often with the council as we learn and get feedback. And I consider that probably to be a conversation that'll be ongoing at least the next five years. Thank you.
Something else to remember in some of these grants, I think construction and whatever has to be completed like 10 years down the road. And some of these grants do not come, aren't going to be advertised until maybe two or three years down the road. So it's a long-term process. So we're going to be taking a look at it very closely. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you, ordinance, excuse me. Resolution 2022-012 passes on a five zero vote. Moving on to the next item, Resolution 2022-013 authorizing the city manager to issue an invitation to bid for beetle kill hazard tree mitigation efforts on select city properties introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
So moved to adopt Resolution 2022-013.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I've got our Parks and Rec Director Andrew, Andrew here tonight. John Zorneski, our planning directors here. Basically, we've, you know, been waiting for this grant review process to move forward for quite some time. John was really engaged a couple of years ago in researching and trying to seek out available grant funds to deal with the Spruce Park beetle issue. We had identified funds, they're federal funds, that were going to be a pass through a state agency, and we had done, I think, all, a good job, done our part of getting them the information they needed. But despite that, the process has, has taken longer than was ideal. And though we've done some small amounts of mitigation, we did some dog park tree removal. Andrew's crew does some tree removal themselves. We're really at a place now where, because of the length of time since those trees have, since the infestation, as you know, they're now at a risk of falling. So though the original grant was to deal with wildfire mitigation, now we've got a real concern about proximity of some of these trees to our campground, our trails. And we reached out to our contacts at the state who have really been kind of with us along this process all along. We stressed the urgency that exists now and, and our very real concerns about opening up the campgrounds in the current state with the trees the way they are. We now believe that the FEMA funding, that original funding, is not going to be available to us on a timeline that is going to help with dealing with this urgent need. We engaged in a discussion with our folks, contacts at the state about whether there's additional alternate funding sources that might be available, and they're really diligently looking into that for us. So last week, we had a meeting with them about this issue. Later in the week, they contacted us and, and asked for us to fill out some additional paperwork. I believe they're, they're doing a good faith effort and may have identified funding that could, could be used in lieu of this federal funding, hopefully on the timeline that we're, we're needing to move forward with. But ultimately, it's our recommendation that we not open up the campgrounds without mitigating at least the trees that are in proximity fall risk to, to the campsites and infrastructure. This, I'm going to stop there in terms of, if there's specific questions about the granting opportunities or about the status of our, all of our parklands and the trees, as I mentioned, John and Andrew are here and, and could lend their expertise and comments on those. I will say the resolution would authorize us to go out to bid. We'd be ready to do that effectively tomorrow if the council approves this, to solicit contractor to come in and, and deal with the, those hazard trees. Andrew's got some rough ideas in terms of his best estimates at some budgeting. This is fairly rough budgeting at this point. We would know through that bidding process what the true costs would be. But we were roughly intending to follow a similar scope of work that we identified in the grant proposal two years ago. So it still is hazard wildfire mitigation, but ultimately, it would allow us to prioritize that tree removal upfront. We don't think that this is going to be the end of the issue on our city lands, but this, these are the, the areas that we deemed most urgent in terms of now the trees with the wind throw risk, the fall risk. I'll conclude my report there, but as I mentioned, the administration and our staff were happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the, excuse me, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Resolution 2022-013? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Matter is now back in front of the council. Are there any council comments? Ms. Hutchings?
So my question is, if you get funding from the state or the federal government, would you just replace these funds that you are wishing to expend at this time? In other words, are you going to use general funds for this particular bid?
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Through the mayor, the timeline moving forward would be that if, if this resolution's approved, we would go out to bid through our normal procurement process, and then we would bring back a resolution to the council authorized, seeking to authorize the award of that contract. We don't believe that funds will have to be actually expensed, like writing checks, for the next month or so. So we have a little bit of time. What we're recommending in the memo is that if, if grant funds are not identified on a timeline that's useful, we would propose to use ARPA grant funds. However, our hope is that the state may be able to find some additional hazard funds that, that could directly be applied to this project. We will know more moving forward, unfortunately. But, but our intent would be to bring a laydown resolution after going out to bid at your next meeting. Hopefully by then, we'd have an update from the state about whether they feel that their other pot of funds may benefit us.
And so then we could possibly have our work session so that we could discuss what we want to do with these ARPA funds, because it seems like we're getting the cart before the horse here, because I thought that's what we were going to do, is discuss how we wanted to allocate those funds.
We certainly could. So we could certainly schedule a work session at the next meeting. This, one benefit of using the ARPA funds for a project like this is that they're already appropriated. So it's a one-meeting type of decision where the council could say in one meeting, yes, we're willing to designate these funds, versus seeking an ordinance to appropriate general funds would require two meetings. But to answer your question, absolutely, we could, we could schedule that work session. And if, if I had some direction from council about what you would want us to prepare and bring to that, we could, we could prepare for that.
Yeah, I guess my real problem with these ARPA funds is that we're starting to piecemeal when we really need to sit down and have a plan. And so that's why I really would like to see us have that work session so that we could say, okay, this is going to be, you know, approximately what we're going to use for this and on down the line, instead of everybody coming in wanting different things out of this bucket.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions actually for the administration. So the, the FEMA funds that we were seeking previously, are those still an option to come in at some later date, or is that process over?
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge. Through the mayor, that process is ongoing. So where they're at in, in their review is that they're requiring an environmental assessment. They have hired a federal contractor. That, that entity is scheduled to perform that work this summer. So that is still ongoing. However, in our conversation with, with the folks at the State of Alaska, they had indicated that if the city moves forward in altering the scope of our original request, meaning we take some of those trees out now, it may threaten our ability to get those grant funds at all. So they confirmed that, that any work we do now would not be eligible for reimbursement, even if we were following exactly the same project that we outlined and described to them. It would not be reimbursable, but it may threaten our ability to get those FEMA funds. Depending on if the council agrees with kind of our assessment of the urgency of the situation, really, I think what that means is, is that FEMA funding may be of little use to us. It may be that if the council agrees that we need to move forward, then essentially we are now engaging in removing those trees ahead of the FEMA process in a way where we will get back in touch with those folks, but it may be that we're not eligible to get those funds after taking those actions.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess, just so I can make sure I'm understanding what you're saying fully. So because the timeline is urgent, essentially, we can't open campgrounds safely without this process happening, happening relatively quickly, because campgrounds are opening in, I would assume, a month or so. The, the urgency is such that we need to be able to send a bid out as soon as, send this out for bid as soon as possible. And then since we wouldn't have to do two separate meetings to appropriate funds, since ARPA funds already are appropriated, that we would essentially use that pot of money with the hope that we didn't need to use ARPA funds at all. Essentially, the ARPA funds would be there to say, hey, we, we got your back. This is an important thing and we want this to move forward. But our hope is to pay, pay for it with other grant funds. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Thank you, Councilmember Ruffridge. Through the mayor, yes, it is my hope that the state will be able to find additional grant funding for us on a timeline that could meet this immediate need. But it's not guaranteed at this point. And so typically, we would always have the council either already appropriated funding or identified funding before we go out to bid for a project. So that's why we're having this conversation tonight. And, and that's why it'd be good for the council to think about whether you would be agreeable, amenable to using ARPA funding if this other funding is, does not become available. But ultimately, that decision would not be made tonight. It would be made at, at the meeting when we bring forward the contract for a potential award.
Thank you. And just a comment to that, I mean, I'm fully supportive of using our funds. What I'm hearing is the idea of stretching funds. So using funds that we already have appropriated in order to essentially say, we can start this now. It doesn't come out of general funds. Our hope is to grant fund it. And that, I think that's a really smart use of funds. I get that these ARPA funds are potentially causing a bit of consternation amongst those of us in decision, decision-making land. But I think this is a wise use of those funds, is to essentially back up our efforts to seek other funds and essentially stretch those dollars out. So appreciate the work that's being done on this and appreciate the efforts that Andrew's put into bringing this forward. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At some point in the past, when we last discussed this issue as a council, I brought up my concern about removing a significant amount of green space, well, I should say brown space now, given the state of those trees throughout the city, and what we would be doing as far as efforts to re-tree or ensure that we replace that green space. At that point, I believe we were told that as part of this potential project, as it was being planned at that point in time, the city was looking at doing some form of re-treeing effort as part of this. As this is currently presented to us today, does this still include re-treeing?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton. I'd like to ask Andrew to maybe come up and speak to that question. Thank you.
Right now, the financial request is to remove. Our issue right now is gravity. It's not fire. It's not green. It's not brown. It's gravity. We have, and we've got trees falling and every, we used to have the occasional call after a windstorm, and now we have them rampant. Overtime callouts, falling on neighbors' dumpsters, falling on the stairs, falling on, falling on, falling on. And they go different directions because they're not supported by the trees that used to be around them. So the more you remove, the more they fall. But nonetheless, we've got trees shattering into pieces. So the, the plan is ongoing, is to work with, we've been working with the Kenai River Rotary over the last few years, and they've been providing 400 saplings a year to start regrowth in swift water. And that's where the, we've been pulling out about 300 to 400 a year in swift water as is, and they've been replenishing those. We haven't done as much in Centennial, but it is to work with groups like that, as well as some caring for the Kenai, possibly Kenai had a project last year. And then also, we have some equipment we've purchased in the council authorized over the years to allow us to transplant wild trees from where they're too dense. We have some patches in Centennial that, a patch the size of this room has about 100 trees that can actually safely be removed and transplanted, so that we're not only planting the saplings, we're not only, we're getting some four and five-foot spruce coming in and out of those. To augment that, then you'll probably, you'll see in the next budget cycle requests for, to purchase an amount, an amount of ornamental trees, especially when you start having to eliminate three-quarters of the trees here at City Hall. You don't want to necessarily just put in saplings. So some of those areas would receive trees like we put in Selatana Creek Park where they look mature going in, as well as non-spruce based, so that we do have a diversified canopy within the urban forest. Urban forest trees live 30% shorter lives than they do outside, but also the worst thing you can do is, is have all one type of tree, as you see in the ash-boring beetles that hit the east and south and east. And now we got our spruce beetles. So it's to diversify. But moving forward, this money right here is basically just to make things safe with ongoing efforts as far as transplanting and the stuff that we've been doing, but then step that up once we kind of get a better idea of where we're pulling all the trees out where we have to. There'll be trees in the middle of Centennial's 120 acres that we may decide long-term not to remove, because the beetles are out of it. It's dead. If they fall, no one hears it. And those type of things. So then to focus on those other areas. And as well as, unless we clearcut an area or we know we're done in an area, putting new trees in there, great hampers for future removals.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
So, I certainly agree with the, the urgency here from the situations being described. And I guess what I'm hearing from the administration's report is if the granting agencies require NEHP, the environmental assessment, that's certainly practically impossible to get that done in the timeline that we need, which sounds to be four to six weeks roughly. So, I would support this. I think, you know, with a question of, of the bigger, broader plan for ARPA funding, which I'm kind of hearing from the council might be a wise thing. My question to the administration, apologies for just dumping this on you, but what would be the consequence if we didn't want to allocate ARPA funding tonight for this project, which I'm not saying anybody would or wouldn't? What would be the issue if we took general fund monies? Would there be any consequence or downside to that?
Thank you, Councilman, for the question. Through the mayor, it's, it's a two-week time delay. So, appropriating general funds could, well, let me qualify that. So, normally, appropriating funds would be a two-meeting process through an ordinance. This may qualify as an emergency ordinance where the council could appropriate funds via an emergency ordinance, which if it meets specific criteria in our code, could be done in one meeting. We had started to look into that, and I think that we deemed that that was, Breck, can I see your nodding? Was that a viable path forward? Yes. So, it is possible if, if there was a preference for using general funds, that those could be appropriated at the council's next meeting via an emergency ordinance. So, that, that two-week delay could be mitigated.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutchings?
So, in other words, passing this tonight would authorize you to get a bid but not to expend the funds. Is that what you're saying?
Councilwoman Hutchings through the mayor? Correct. So, it doesn't, it doesn't lock us in or allocate funding. It authorizes us to hit the street with a bid, which...
And then it could come to the council as an emergency in two weeks' time, is what you're saying, once you'd have your prices and we had decided how we wanted to go about it?
That is correct. And I will say, I don't think Melanie, our finance director, is on the line still. But from the administration's perspective, we, I don't think we have a preference one way or the other. So, either funding source would be equally suitable provided that we could, could do it in that emergency ordinance fashion at the following meeting. So, I don't, I'm really open to either approach. And in fact, we had, we had researched both approaches.
So, one more point. If we approve Resolution 2022-013, it does not mean we are approving ARPA funds. We are just approving the efforts to get a bid. Is that correct?
Councilwoman Hutchings, correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Couple, couple things I want to commend the administration for looking at protecting our residents and our, and our visitors from the devastation we've witnessed here the last couple of years. And I go back to over 25 years ago is when we had the first onset of Spruce Park Beetle. And we were able to get good funding from the federal government for removal throughout the borough. And it's when we also set up the Firewise program with the assistance of FEMA. So, I am, I'm very disappointed that the agency that's designed to help protect us is putting up barriers as we try to protect our residents and, and the visitors here. So, that, that being said, when I look at the, the scope of the project and the projected costs, there, there is one area that kind of jumps out at me that I know there will be lots of complaints coming from nearby neighbors, and that's in Memorial Park. They weren't happy with the work that we did when we did the upgrade because now they've, more open space. And now, you remove trees and there's going to be more open space, but you're also protecting them from, from a potential fire. So, that, that's the extent of, one, one question. When we look at the four areas and then we have this option to purchase the tree shears, could we look at prioritizing doing Centennial and Swiftwater? I mean, we're talking 1,500 trees through this whole process.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. I'd like to ask maybe Kyle or John to speak to how we prioritized our request to the state. We did actually give them individually prioritized segments of this project.
Thank you for the question. We did, under the guidance from, I guess you'd call it round three of attempts to get grant funding to deal with this problem, break it up into smaller geographic areas rather than one big project. The, the current approach for the potential grant through, through the state would prioritize Centennial as the, as the number one area to remove the Spruce Park Beetle trees, and then Swiftwater, and then the Aspen properties, followed by Memorial Park. I'm up to four now. Parker, West Reed Out and Parker Park, I believe.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I, I am a little bit concerned about the, the conversation regarding using, or the potential of using an emergency general fund appropriation in order to move this forward. We just appropriated, or we have ARPA funds appropriated already. They're appropriated. That's why we can bring them forward two weeks from now and use as an option to back up the grant funds that could be applied for through the state. And obviously, we'll know more in our meeting in two weeks. The, we just also appropriated ARPA funds to the tune of $150,000 for grant writing services. And I don't, I don't get the sense that we're using these sort of piecemeal. I feel like our administration is being strategic and trying to use these funds to the best of their ability to stretch our resources. Certainly, having that come out of general fund, I'm not certain that that makes a lot of sense to me. So, I, I am supportive of this resolution in its form, including seeking approval to use ARPA, ARPA funds in the future, if that is what's brought before us at our next meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? I do have a couple here. You know, I'd, I'd hate to see the city of Saldana being penalized by FEMA for moving ahead on a safety issue. You know, I guess the bureaucracy needs to understand that a tree doesn't wait for them. If it's going to come down, it's going to come down. And if there's somebody underneath it, or there's a tent or a trailer or something like that, FEMA isn't going to be the one that's looking at the liability. It's going to be the city of Saldana and the Parks Department and everyone else. As far as taking, prioritizing which park to work on, I would rather see us prioritize which trees to take out, no matter where they're at. There's some trees that, like Andrew said, can stay up and, for a while in Centennial. But there may be trees over in Swiftwater or someplace else that need to come down right away. And we need to move forward on that. We need to get that done. The last thing we need is to have a tourist get hit by a limb falling off a tree. So, those are my comments, and we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-013 passes on a 5-0 vote. Moving on to Resolution 2022-014, authorizing the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with Wince, Carthell, Bryson Consulting Engineers in the amount of $18,006 for professional design services for the Aspen Acres parking lot. Final design introduced by the city manager. May have a motion to adopt. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is, the council previously authorized us to enter into an agreement with Aspen Hotels to lease and develop the empty gravel lot in front of the hotel right along the highway for public parking. As part of those negotiations back and forth, we had used some of our own contracted services money to engage Wince, Carthell, Bryson in doing a conceptual design. And then that, that conceptual design was, became the basis of the negotiations back and forth with, with the landowner. This resolution would authorize us to continue work with them, specifically to have them finish the design so that it's ready to go out to bid for construction. And it's under the $20,000, which generally from our procurement code gives us some flexibility. But it is a sole source, and, and we're really careful in bringing those types of requests to the council for your approval. So, we're seeking council approval for an award, $18,006. This would allow them to finish the design. We'll go out to bid, hopefully get that started. As we mentioned, the construction funding was previously appropriated by the council already under our capital budget. And I think I have an email waiting for me from John. The other landowner, the Aspen Hotel, has signed the agreement. It's just waiting for my signature. This would allow us to move forward. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the council chambers who would like to speak on Resolution 2022-014? Seeing none, I'm looking at Zoom and see no hands raised. Hearing no one wishing to speak on this item, it's back before the council. Any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-014 passes on a 5-0 vote. Moving on to the next item is, under other, is Action Memorandum 2022-009, Discussion and Potential Guidance to the City Clerk on Two-Way Video Teleconferencing, Introduced by the Acting City Clerk. A report from this acting city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In July of 2020, in response to the COVID pandemic, Action Memorandum 2020-014, Discussion of Video Streaming and Public Accessibility During COVID-19, was approved as amended with a motion to direct the administration to implement video streaming and two-way video teleconferencing. The clarifying amendment did not establish if two-way video teleconferencing was intended to be implemented moving forward or only while COVID-19 pandemic was of high concern. I'm requesting feedback from council on two-way video teleconferencing in the long term, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I remember having this discussion. I just don't remember what the final resolution was to how we were going to do that. And I think, Mr. Chilton, maybe you can...
Certainly. Well, my intent with introducing this action memorandum back in 2020 was to really catch us up to where other municipalities were on the peninsula. So, entering that point in time, I feel like we were really lagging behind other legislative bodies in the way they make themselves accessible to the public. And that, our only way to participate remotely was via call-in when our council members were away and unable to be here in person. And as far as consuming our meetings after the fact, the public only could listen to the recordings. At that point in time, every other municipality on the peninsula, to my understanding, had some form of video streaming for their council meetings. And at least Homer and the Kenai Peninsula Borough also allowed two-way participation with Zoom. I felt at that point in time, the COVID-19 pandemic and the way it was currently unfolding was a good reason to accelerate our, our need to catch up and deploy two-way video conferencing. I feel it has certainly served its use over the last two years. I, I would agree that, given our current trajectory with COVID, there's certainly less of a need to have it. However, I never really intended for it to go away. When we got out of the pandemic, I feel like it still presents utility even moving forward, as evident by tonight, even with Councilmember Ruffridge participating remotely. You know, pandemic aside, there will always be situations in which we have council members that are not able to participate here in person. And, you know, if, if I wasn't a member of the council and I was just a member of the public, trying to observe these council meetings, I feel like I get value from being able to see the faces of my representatives in the city. And being able to see them participating via Zoom, I think presents more value than just listening to them call-in over a telephone. So, my, my personal opinion is that I would not like to see us move away from, from having two-way video communication from our meetings and that we continue to stream video to the public and post those recordings after the fact. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I don't believe there's any recurring cost. Or if there is, it's very minimal in keeping the setup. I mean, we've already, we've already outlaid the initial expenditures to, to make this a possibility for our council. And I would really just hate to see us have this really amazing video conferencing setup that, okay, this is great, but let's just put it aside now because we don't need it. It doesn't hurt to have it. And if it presents value for even a couple of our community members, let's make it accessible. Looking at this report that was included in the packet, yes, there have been declining number of attendees using it. But there are still people using it. And if it doesn't cost us anything to make it available for those that like to use it, let's keep doing so. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
Any other council comments?
I, I would have to agree with Councilman Chilton. And, you know, particularly for video conferencing, I see this as something that we're going to continue to do for years going forward. It also affords us the opportunity to be able to video conference and have somebody from Juno or our, one of our congressional folks from Washington, DC, join us in a meeting and join us via video. So, I, I don't see a need for it to disappear. I mean, Zoom and Microsoft Teams are going to be around for, for years.
Is the, the thought to continue the Zoom or some other means to do it?
I would like to see the Zoom option continue. It's, it's a platform that we have, we've already invested in. Our staff know how to use it. Zoom is probably one of the most ubiquitous teleconferencing platforms that exists out there. The public knows how to use. I'm sure there are other alternatives out there that we could, we could explore. But honestly, this is what we have. It's easy. People know it. Let's just keep doing it. That would be my recommendation.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found this odd that this was brought forward today. I had no idea that I would test positive for COVID half hour before planning on attending today's meeting. So, yeah, I just, on a whim, thought I wasn't feeling my best. And so, I thought I'd better test before attending today, and, and glad I did. So, I, I agree and I appreciate Councilmember Chilton bringing this forward. You know, this, I would hate for this to go away. And I think that there is, there's still going to be people throughout this process of recovery and moving past COVID. I think it taught us a few things, which is we probably shouldn't attend meetings in person when we don't, don't feel our best. And regardless of whether that's COVID-related or not, you know, this at least gives opportunity for council members as well as the public to just be engaged from wherever they end up being at. And I, I fully support moving, moving in that direction. So, thank you.
Do we need a motion to instruct the clerk to continue on with the Zoom? Or if we just make that the, the decision of the council to continue with Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, there's no action or motion needed at this point.
All right. So, as I understand it, we will continue doing the Zoom meetings for the public and anyone else who wants to participate. So, moving along to the next item on the agenda is the informational memorandum 2022-001, Mayor's Veto of Resolution 2022-010, Providing Up to Providing Up to $25,000 From the COVID-19 Relief Special Revenue Fund To The Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts For The Purpose Of Producing An Outdoor Community Theater Production At Saldana Creek Park In The Summer Of 2022. Introduced by the actor, written by the acting city clerk and report from the acting city clerk.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Personal Dotna Municipal Code 2.05.060, The Mayor May Veto An Ordinance, Resolution, Motion, Or Other Action Of The Council With Certain Exceptions. Resolution 2022-010 Does Not Meet The Standard For Any Exceptions From This Power. A veto must be exercised before the next regular meeting of the council And Be Accompanied With A Written Explanation For The Reason Of The Veto. Resolution 2022-010 Was Passed On March 23rd, At The March 23rd Meeting And Mayor Whitney Exercised His Right To Veto And Submitted A Written Explanation Of His Reason On March 24th. A veto may be overridden by a vote of two-thirds of the council for members Within 21 Days Following The Exercise Of The Veto Or At The Next Regular Meeting Whichever Is Later. The Deadline For Council To Consider An Override Of The Veto Is April 14th. I welcome any questions in regards to procedure.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to make a motion to override this veto.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Vice Mayor Parker.
Can I speak to that please, Mr. Mayor?
Not right this second, I'm going to open up for public hearing. Is that alright?
Yes sir.
Because there's a motion in front of the council, I will open up this public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach and state your name and address for the record in three minutes.
Good evening, Joe Rizzo, PO Box 322, Kenai, Alaska 99611. Ladies and gentlemen, I really came here tonight to basically say, I think that Triumvirate Theater or the Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts, you know, even nonprofits have political capital. And when we, every time we ask for money from a grant or a body such as this, we are using some of that political capital. And so, and that's the way it goes, right? You ask, you either get it or you don't get it. And in this case, the veto that the mayor put forth and decided it was because of the process is not something that Triumvirate Theater has anything to do with. We can't, we can't address that, we can't like resolve that because it doesn't really have anything to do with us. If you voted against it because you didn't like the merits of the program, well then that's completely legitimate. In this case, you know, the veto was spurred on because of the process. Now, if I go down to the clerk's office and I make up my own grant funds, a grant fund form, and I say, you know, we would like $25,000 to do this service for the city and I, you know, put a little paragraph and then I sign it and I take it to the clerk and say, I want the council to like consider this, the clerk will tell me, that's not the process. I can't bring that before the council in that matter because it's not the process. Triumvirate followed the process, it was sponsored, we spoke to it, council voted on it. That was, that was the process and the council, this council passed it. So I'm not, I failed to understand how this veto, how you can uphold the veto. Because we followed the process that was there and we have no redress. And so as we fill out these grants, looking for partnership grants to do this event, it's very hard for me as the executive director to write those grants and persuade these folks to support this partnership with the council or with the city of Saldana, when it's on the headlines that it's being vetoed and then if tonight it is sustained, that basically tells the people I'm asking for funds from to support this event for the city of Saldana, it tells them the city is not truly in support of it. Even though four people voted for it and passed it on the council, so, thank you very much.
Any questions from the council? I do have one.
Yes sir.
Did you apply to the borough for a grant?
I did not.
And is there a reason why?
We did not apply to the borough to the grant? Why didn't we do that?
Yeah, why didn't you ask the borough for funding?
Oh, we didn't ask the borough for funding because there's no mechanism for that.
You could do the same thing that you've done here and ask an assembly member to introduce them.
I don't know, I don't know whether or not that's possible or not, I guess Tyson could answer that question. Why didn't you do that? I'm sorry, I have no information on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyson Cox, 237 West Reed Out, Saldana. First off, I want to thank the mayor for giving us this time, it's not required, so I do appreciate that you're giving time for public testimony. I wanted to start a little bit with looking back at last year. We did go to the first evening of the show last year and we sat down as a family to watch it, it was free, it was wonderful that we were able to do it. In fact, it was a very beautiful day. And in a few minutes after sitting down, I was rushed up to the front and asked if I could help push in and out the boat that was being on stage. And so, you know, I said, sure, I'll do that. So for the entirety of the play, I was up on stage. Behind the boat, you may have seen my arm or my foot or something like that. And I will be happy to say that is my one and only time of being in a play. Anyways, the idea behind that story is that's what our park is about. Our park is about events that we have there. And so I kind of look at this and I ask the question, I know we're looking at process, but the question I bring forward is, is this just trying to give money to a nonprofit? Or is this funding an event in Saldana for our community? When you look at it as funding an event for our community, it's not giving a grant or going through a grant process. And in that is, is when we talk about process, and I'm all about process, I understand that and I appreciate the mayor bringing that forward. But what I have to ask is was process not followed? Is as of right now, the process to follow would be to have a council member bring that forward if they think it a good idea and something to be funded. Whether it be through ARPA money or a general fund thing, no matter what kind of monies it is, that is when the proper process is to do that. And what that does is then, then the council member brings it forward, it goes to you guys as the council members, it has a public hearing, which is proper process, and then a vote. Unless there was a process in place already for that, I think that what we're ending up doing is we're penalizing this group for trying to accomplish that. But really who we're penalizing is we're penalizing our community. If this can't go forward, my kids, me, my family, my wife, we're going to be the ones that miss out. It's important to do these events, it's important to have things for the community. And I know there's not necessarily a monetary like piece to it that the city's going to get, but it's important for building community and I really just hope that you guys will reconsider this. And, you know, it's sad that there is not one more member here because I think the only reason this wouldn't pass is on a technicality. I think it probably should and probably would have on a different day. So I just, I appreciate your time and I do appreciate what you guys do and I do think you guys make good decisions and have the ability to make this decision as well, thanks.
Laura McGinnis, PO Box 91, Kenai, Alaska 99611. I'm going to kind of pick up where Tyson left off and we didn't even coordinate our speech, but I spent a lot of time writing CARES grants over the last two years. I stopped counting at about 12 million for businesses in our community. And what I know is if we don't have ARPA funds that are used for resilience and community and coming back from where we have been, we're going to be tapping on all of those businesses that are already strapped to come up with those funds. And I think that using the ARPA funds to offset that and to give us time to regroup as a community, as Tyson talked about, being in that park and reconnecting is imperative. It is a gift that we need to give and it's putting those funds towards future resilience and success and bouncing back as a community together. So I would hope that you would reconsider, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from the council? Thank you.
Matt Wilson, 34462, Matanuska Street, Saldana. To the city council, I'm the general manager of the KS Farm Radio Group in Kenai and Saldana. We have six radio stations that broadcast across the Kenai and our company's been in business here on the peninsula for 55 years. Over my many years at the helm of KS Farm, we've worked very closely with the Triumvirate Theater and KS Farm has provided tens of thousands of dollars in advertising to the Triumvirate Theater for its many community projects, plays, initiatives and programs. And KS Farm has and will continue to partner with the Triumvirate Theater. I'd like to speak briefly in agreements of what has been said so far to the Triumvirate Theater summer performance at Saldana Creek Park this summer. After personally witnessing many of the performances myself, I can think of no other community organization that could sustain the summer performance at Saldana Creek Park. Triumvirate Theater has been working with our community members since 1998 and even after a fire destroyed their building and resources, Triumvirate Theater continues to raise from the ashes and continues to provide entertainment and community outreach across the peninsula. Triumvirate Theater for close 25 years have been bringing the magic of theater to children for many years with focus on cooperative learning and real-life stage experience, as you've heard already tonight from other people that have spoke. I'd like to add that KS Farm has and continues to partner with the city of Saldana and the Saldana Chamber of Commerce for many of the community events throughout the community and we also continue to support what the Triumvirate Theater does. What this does is it makes an amazing place for us to live, for us to have community support and with this and with these opportunities, we work together with faith and we believe in each other and that's why these things support each other and we trust each other. I would encourage the Saldana City Council to continue to fund the 2022 performance with Triumvirate Theater and future performances, as I said before, another way to help bring our community together. I thank the Saldana City Council for the opportunity to speak this evening and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see, well, I'll add this in there, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see no hands raised. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate those comments from those in attendance there today. I share their concerns and the intent of bringing forward the override of this veto is we were bringing an opportunity to create a sustainable community arts event to our park and now that's turned into a difficulty for our friends at Triumvirate Theater. This body has not used veto power in over a decade and frankly, I find that it's incredible that we would not override this veto for a few reasons. First of all, we are all aware of the tragedy that occurred at Triumvirate Theater. As a result, they are working to garner support and rebuild as well as continue to offer arts and entertainment to kids and adults alike. Everyone in this room is aware of the rationale for the veto, which was the process. However, that is not the perception and I'm afraid perception is frankly reality. A veto from a local municipality who previously passed a resolution of support is damaging to the reputation of this nonprofit. In my opinion, this veto has many unintended consequences and negative perceptions towards a local theater nonprofit group should really never be the outcome that we as a body seek. Secondly, and we talked about this earlier today, the use of ARPA funds. We just passed a resolution to use ARPA funds as financial backing and followed the process, which was bringing it forward for a vote, which we did. And I'm concerned that this body will potentially look hypocritical should we allow this veto to continue. And lastly, I believe that there's no other option for this event to take place in the park this summer without overriding this veto. As I spoke to you in our last meeting, our support allowed the theater group to move forward with grant funding to make this a possibility with the potential of using absolutely no ARPA funds. So we're using these funds essentially the same way we were talking about using the funds for removal of trees as financial backing while we wait for grant funding to come in. If this veto stands the likelihood of obtaining those grants with no municipal support is very unlikely. And as a result, so is the opportunity to build something sustainable in our park. I really believe this resolution is responsible, it's conservative and it makes sense. And I really urge a vote to override this veto and thank you for the opportunity to speak to that, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Again, the recurring theme of the discussion that we keep hearing tonight is process. I do feel completely that the process was followed in this. As members of this legislative body, any of us have the ability to bring forward a proposal to appropriate funds for something in the community. Even if ARPA wasn't there, we could do this at any meeting with the general fund. We are in a position thankfully where we have a lot of unallocated ARPA funds that are intended strictly for this purpose of helping our community rebuild and come back together as a community. This event is a great example of something that does just that. It brings people together in our park, it builds community, which is just something that we need after these last couple of years. You know, I spoke to this at our last meeting, I don't view this as just throwing money at something like, here, take this award, this is, this is an investment. We have the opportunity here to take money that was basically given to us by the federal government and snowball it into something amazing for our community. If you look back at the Music in the Park series, which is a staple of our community now and where that began, you know, there was money that was provided by the chamber and the city to kind of get that up off the ground, but, and it has just grown and grown to where it's now something that's self-sufficient and I would argue that it contributes significantly to our local economy during the summer, drawing people from all around the surrounding area into our city. And this has the potential to do just that and that park is one of the greatest assets of our city and whatever that we can do to invest in it and continue to grow the programming and draw people into our city and get them down there spending time, you know, shopping at our stores and again, just giving the kids just something to do after they've just been shuttered away the last two years. It's the least we can do and, you know, I have no issues allocating the money. I think this followed the process, it's going to do good for our community. Mr. Mayor, I do agree with you that I think there is definitely justification and putting together some formal work session to where we can establish a formalized grant process to continue to make ARPA funds available for other nonprofits in the community. But just because we didn't have that in place when this proposal was brought forward doesn't mean that didn't follow the process and I don't want to see us hurt our community by denying this opportunity in the guise of following a process that wasn't even there to begin with. But that being the case, I would love to see this passed, let's support our community, keep this going forward and let's still, you know, honor your ask of getting that work session together and let's establish a process for formalizing this and making opportunities available for other nonprofits. So there is equity there as well and I think that we can, we can come to a mutually beneficial solution here tonight by overriding this veto, so thank you for your consideration.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Nelson?
So thank you very much for those that came out tonight and talked. It was nice to see some folks at our meeting and being able to talk to this. So, you know, I spoke against this at the last meeting. You know, I cited some things that I was concerned about the proposal, so sustainability was one. I do want to remind folks in this conversation that, you know, we did fund this once and now the ask is for a second time and I understand the formula is a little bit different. And, you know, I think it's important to underscore that, you know, this has nothing to do... you know, I think it's important to underscore that, you know, this has nothing to do with almost the merits of the thing. Everybody up here is supportive of theater, the arts, and all of those types of things. I appreciate talking through some of the process with Mr. Rizzo earlier, I was reliving a little bit of my time doing a little bit of theater way back when, so certainly appreciate that. But I still have concerns that this may not be really a sustainable project going forward. Production's expensive, you know, we had a briefing on that again at our last meeting. So I still have those concerns, and I think the city is being asked to take a risk financially, and let's put aside the source of the funds for a second, that, you know, is that really the best thing and the best role for us to take? I have concerns about it. About the ARPA funds themselves, I think, I acknowledge that, yeah, we did a few things tonight, we did some fairly urgent things, we're doing some things to take advantage of the opportunity that presented themselves with grants, and I think all of those things were appropriate, I think the rest of the council agrees, but, you know, we're also making assumptions on how we might use that in the future without going through, I hate to use the word process, but I'll get to it, of, you know, are we going to use that for external things like CARES, or are we going to do that a different way? As far as the process is concerned, I think Triumphant followed the process. They did what they were supposed to do, has been pointed out, they came to a member, it came before the body action was taken. I think they're getting a little bit of a bum rap tonight on this, and I think they did what they needed to do and what was appropriate to do. The mayor also followed the process. The mayor has the right to do what he did per code, he did that the right way, and he vetoed it. So I think process is something we're talking a lot about tonight, I think we all follow the process, and sometimes those processes don't really work for us. So I'm just going to say, my concerns originally that I voiced in our last meeting, they're still there. So because of that fact, I'm not going to support overriding the veto tonight. Thanks.
Ms. Hutchings.
I have a lot of concerns with this, and because I know how much the community came out last time and really supported it, and I just feel that I made the mistake of not reducing the amount in an amendment, and when it passed, I thought, okay, it passed, I guess I have a second opportunity, and so I, again, will not be supporting this.
Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you. At risk of being too long-winded here, I just have a few concerns about some of the things that were mentioned. First of all, Mr. Nelson mentioned he was concerned about risk, and I guess I, I'm not understanding that statement. I don't understand what the risk is here. We just voted on hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of funding going all over the place today, and this is one opportunity to legitimately do something essentially for free. I'm not understanding that. Secondly, sustainability, don't understand how we can prove that something is sustainable without doing it again. And I want to just be very clear that this event does not take place again if we don't do something to have this conversation a different way. So as Mr. Cox was saying, I don't think we have this conversation in this regard, except for there's a little bit of a technical challenge today as we're missing a member, and that's a challenge, and this did pass. And yeah, I think, you know, the word a bum rap is right, and is that really what this body wants to do? Just putting that out there for thought, because I don't understand those comments, frankly, but I will yield my time. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. You know, Saldana Creek Park and the activities and the festivities that we do there year round bring this community together, not only the city of Saldana, but the entire central peninsula. You know, you're talking 38,000 people that utilize Saldana Creek Park, including our visitors, and they enjoy it. And through activities like what Triumphant Theater is doing, it puts pride in our community, and there's a lot of other places around the state of Alaska that are jealous of what we are able to do here. So I know we're not going to override the veto because I can count, and it's not that many, I can do it all on one hand, I don't need two hands tonight. But I do, I think we need to realize that Triumphant Theater followed the process. The administration followed the process with two resolutions we passed tonight appropriating $450,000 of ARPA funds. The veto resolutions mentions you can't support this type of resolution, that a work session should be scheduled to determine how ARPA funds will be used, and if any funds should be set aside for grants to local governments, organizations, and projects. Well, of the 570,000 that we are getting, we have spent 450 of that tonight. So for this first tranche that we're going to get, and we're going to get a second tranche, maybe we can have the work session to talk about how we're going to be spending those ARPA funds, but the ARPA funds that we're getting right now, we basically already spent it all. So I would urge you to vote yes to overturn the mayor's veto and keep following the process.
Mr. Ruffridge.
I made a promise that I didn't keep, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and this is just because I maybe don't understand the process. Is it appropriate at all, and I don't know if we need to take a break to find out, to ask you, Mr. Mayor, to remove your veto in light of the fact that we are missing a member this evening?
I don't vote.
No, not on the vote, to remove your veto.
And I will have some comments. We talked about the process. Some of you were not on the council at the time, but we used to get groups asking for funding, walking in, asking for funding, doing all kinds of different ways for asking for funding. The council made a decision to not do that anymore, not have just something come in front of us all of a sudden. That decision resulted eventually in the mini-grant program and the non-departamental funding system that was done during budget time. The process I'm talking about is the same way we did it with CARES Act money. We put it out there, we said people could, this is what's available, the nonprofits could apply for it, there was an application form, everybody knew what the money was, how much was available, and when it was going to be awarded. As Vice Mayor Parker said, and I think at the last meeting, that didn't want to see this, other groups coming in and asking for more money and additional funding for something. The process I would like to see is the same way we've done it for the CARES Act money. You apply, it's evaluated, and everyone, I mean, everyone, the nonprofits, different projects, schools, whatever it might be, have the opportunity to put in an application for those funds. I also say that if ARPA funds, you know, we have not spent $450,000, we said we could spend up to that much. That still leaves about $150,000 available. If the council wants to sit down on a work session, which I suggest they do, and I suggested this the last time, and decide how those funds are, are we going to make funds available to other groups, outside groups, nonprofits, make it available for them, and they can apply for it. That could be done quickly, we already have the forms all put together already, very similar to what we did with the CARES Act money. Then the council could have a meeting, evaluate those, and decide which ones are going to be funded and for how much. You know, we're not the only government in this area, as I mentioned earlier, was the borough ever requested for funding? The borough had more CARES, not CARES, but more ARPA funds than we did, but that process wasn't followed. So that was my reasoning behind it, and I believe that's all we need to talk about anymore. We'll call for the vote.
Clarification, if we might? If the clerk would read the motion and then identify what a yes vote means and what a no vote means.
The motion from Councilmember Ruffridge is to override the mayor's veto. A yes would be to override, a no would be not to override. Councilmember Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
No.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have three yes votes and two no votes.
The motion failed on a 3-2 vote. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Mayor Council reports. My report is it was never said that by me or anyone else that we didn't think that was a worthy project to do. I think it's a great project. I'm not, and I don't see why anyone seems to think that because we didn't take action on that, that it's a blight on that program or that Triumphant Theater. It's not, you know, we want to come up here right now and make a resolution or make a motion to fully support them in any way, you know, fine, we can do that. So I was a little disappointed when I heard that for us not doing this, or for the council not doing this, it's a bad mark against that organization. I do not believe that, and I'd be very surprised if other people believe that, because if they see what the organization does, they're not going to think that. So moving on to my next comment on here, I'm wishing Dave Carey and Justin, Mr. Ruffridge, hopefully it will get better soon for both of you. Our thoughts are with you both, and I hope you feel better soon. I was glad to see that we had street sweepers out today, you know, that means it's spring, we survived another winter, and I'm sure glad to see that going out. I would like to see a work session put together for the, unfortunately, I won't be here for the next meeting, but maybe a work session before the next meeting and make some decisions on the ARPA funds and if they're going to make funds available for nonprofits and other organizations. If that is done, I think there's enough time that that decision is made at the next meeting or that work session and the next meeting, you know, can get an application process out there very quickly and go from there. The last thing on here is I think we all owe a great bit of gratitude to our acting city clerk, Breck. She has done an absolute outstanding job over the last four months, is it now? Make sure we're doing everything that we need to do and putting in a lot of time, and I mean, it's been a lot of time, we've had a lot of meetings here lately. So that will end my comments for the night. Council reports on boards, Saldana Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission met most recently on April 6th. We had two items on the agenda that evening of note, first being P&amp;Z Resolution 2022-005, which would retroactively authorize a conditional use permit for what was essentially a 2,300 square foot deck that was constructed in 2021 at 987 Keystone Drive without the proper administrative permit in place that it was required to have prior to construction, and they were looking to cure that through the issuance of a conditional use permit. The commission reviewed the deck and found that it met all the standards that would have been required for the permit, with the exception of a setback requirement along the side. After much deliberation, they approved the conditional use permit be issued unanimously with some additional conditions, mainly that revegetation would be required and that they would actually correct the encroachment into the setback along the side by reconstructing that portion of the deck, and that they were not to use the deck until the building permit had been approved. Secondly, the commission reviewed P&amp;Z Resolution 2022-006, which would recommend the subdivision of Saldana Junction Creekside Estates. This is a 22-acre piece of land owned by the Farnsworth Trust that was looking to subdivide this into two parcels, and again, the commission did approve that resolution. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any questions for Mr. Chilson? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I don't have a written report. I have been traveling with several of our staff, we attended the Federal Infrastructure Symposium, the two-day event that was held in Anchorage, and I think there was a lot of value, so we will follow up with, I got home yesterday, I will follow up with a formal report, but we had a lot of great contacts with different agency folks, different colleagues around the state, legislative officials, and I'm glad that myself, Mr. Cornelis, Ms. Reiner, Mr. Allen, were able to attend on behalf of the administration, as well as yourself, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Hutchings and Councilmember Nelson, but in his personal capacity. So I think the city was well represented, we got a lot of information, and I will distill that down and formalize that probably in an email to the council in the next few days. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
And I thank you for mentioning that because I forgot all about it. That was a good symposium, there was a lot of good information there, but like I said, a lot of it was technical, and it's very complex, and it's going to take a lot of work over many years. So moving on to the next item, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Mr. Cox.
Thank you. Tyson Cox, 237 West Street, out of Saldana. I was just going to do a comment on that, I'm definitely disappointed in the outcome of the override of the veto. I very much pride myself on living in the city of Saldana, because in my opinion, the city has always been very, very good at looking at other things besides just monetary value, like when we have events, things like that, it's not just for the value of the event, it's for the value of what that brings to our city and what that can do for our area and to bring people together. I think we're missing out on a big opportunity here to do just that. As far as I know, when we have a veto that goes through like this, I don't believe this can be brought back, I want to say 60 days, but it could be corrected. So it's, well, Breck would have to say what it is, but I know there's a timeframe, and that timeframe is probably too long for Triumphant to make that happen. So in essence, that did probably make it not available unless there's another avenue to take. And so to me, that's a pretty sad thing that we can't support something like that for $25,000, and it's an up to $25,000. It might not even have been $25,000. I've seen this council, and I was on it too, we spent more than $25,000 on what I consider a lot less of an item. This is very valuable, and I'm just a little bit disappointed that it didn't go forward because process was followed in what was available. I think saying that it wasn't is incorrect, and that... And that if you want a process going forward, that's great. But that doesn't mean that these groups should be penalized, and I think that's what's happened here. So, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm coming back because, Laura McGinnis, P.O., Box 91, Kenai, Alaska. I'm coming back because I feel like I let the community of Sault d'Artina and Triumphant down by not expanding on how a presentation like this becomes self-sufficient. But having run the Kenai Peninsula Fair for over 20 years, I'm very aware of what is and isn't a good risk or an equitable use of community funds. And the ability of this to go forward is huge. Mayor Whitney, you say that you feel like it wasn't perceived as rejection of Triumphant. But the very first headline that you see on Facebook when you open up is "Sault d'Artina vetoes supportive Triumphant." That is what it says. And so as we are writing the grants, and I am part of that process to rebuild Triumphant, and we're looking at Murdoch Foundation, and they ask, "How much support do you have within the community?" And our headline on Facebook that keeps coming up from the Clarion is that we have been vetoed. That could potentially cost us $500,000 or $600,000. This is big. This isn't just hurting the whole community on one small event. It's the ripple effect. And I really feel like using the ARPA funds for a ripple effect to keep us from tapping the small businesses that are hurting to ask for support, because you know they will come up with it. Streamews will find money. Everyone will find money that they don't have, because this is good for our community. I think that, I'm just very disappointed that we didn't choose to use the ARPA funds to take that burden off of the businesses this year. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the council? I do have one before you leave.
Oh, so sorry.
You said something about some funders that are seeing that. Please have them call me. I'll tell them how much we support them.
They don't take that time. I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah. Then it's their own fault. Anyone else? Saying none?
Joe Rizzo, P.O., Box 322, Kenai. I do want to, I mean, at this point, I mean, like I said, you know, you throw the dice and you see what happens, and that's how you do this. So, but I do want to encourage this council to, when they're in that workshop and you are looking at these funds and funding some nonprofit projects, I would encourage you to include some of those ARPA funds for that purpose, because I think that little organizations, little nonprofits in our community can do a tremendous amount of good with very little. Triumphant Theater, for its part, is about as sustainable of an organization as you can get as far as being able to develop projects and keep them going. That's how we stayed working for the last 23 years in this community. So I would encourage you to do that. And ironically, if you do do that and we apply and we were to get a grant, well, then I guess we wouldn't have to come up with money to match it. We would just be able to get that money, which is kind of ironic, considering if we were to get this grant for $20,000, we probably wouldn't have needed any of the money in the first place. So, thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else? Looking at Zoom, I see no one on Zoom either. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, council comments. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll echo some of the sentiments that we just heard. In three years of service on this body, I have had very little opportunity to be discouraged. I'm usually pretty proud of the work that we do as a group. Frankly, I'm pretty discouraged today. For those of us who had the opportunity to see the joy of performance in our park last year and to think that that is, as Mr. Cox stated, not a possibility this year, is incredibly frustrating to me. And I think I was pretty clear in my statement about that, and others were as well. As much as we think that we were not voting for or against the theater, we voted for or against the theater. We have countless children in our community that I deal with every day in my professional line of work, more so than ever before, dealing with mental health issues from time locked inside. And they need an outlet. What a better way to use American Rescue Plan funds than to have a way to maybe rescue a kid or two? And I've seen it happen. Performance has a way of bringing people together and giving somebody a little bit of hope, just a little bit. And I think our barrier to being able to help that process was incredibly low. And then we chose not to. And for that, I am discouraged. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. If I might ask the city clerk, what is the timeframe that a resolution could be introduced on a resolution that was vetoed by the mayor and not overridden by council?
The reintroduction timeframe is 90 days.
90 days. Okay, thank you. So my comments are working with the city clerk. We, I recently sent out evaluations. We're starting the evaluation process for the city manager. Please remember to get those back to me so I can get them compiled within the timeframe that the mayor has requested. Moving on, last week, I, myself and my former charter commission member, Jane Anvik, we were able to, we were asked to make a presentation to the University of Alaska OLAY class. And OLAY classes are for seniors, citizens, who want to take some continuing ed classes. And Heather Flynn was, for this semester, was putting together classes dealing with local government. And so she asked Jane and I to come back and provide an update, kind of tell people about what we did when we formed the Anchorage Charter Commission and the process. And we followed it here when we created the Home Rule for the city of Sault d'Artina. But this was back in 1975, when we had the Greater Anchorage area borough and the city of Anchorage. And in a seven-month timeframe, we were able to combine, and the voters accepted the charter that we wrote. And part of the person who was part of this process was my friend Arla. And she died that day. So keep her in your thoughts as a person who was a spectacular leader, who thought about family, community, state. Do what's best for your family, your community, and your state. But I have to say, the reason I brought this up, at the end of the class, Heather Flynn asked me the question. She said, "You're now on the local city council in Sault d'Artina. What can you tell us about Sault d'Artina? What's good about Sault d'Artina? What's bad?" And I had to, I was very, they were a little surprised, because I was so proud. And I said, "We have a fantastic administration. We have a wonderful city manager who, with a master's degree, a Rhodes Scholar. She could go and do anything she wants. But she came back home to give back to her community." The one area where I said, "We could probably do some improvements," I said, "I can't think of too many areas where we can do improvements," but was with snow removal. And that, in Anchorage, they understood that completely. But the one area where I got lots of gasps from the people were, and I said, "Because of the sales tax that we have that supports our city government, as a property owner in the city and a resident of the city, I have .5 mils that I pay in property tax." And you should have seen the people on the screen as they went, "Oh, wow." "In Anchorage paying 20 mils?" They very much appreciated that, what we're doing here in Sault d'Artina. So it was nice to be able to brag about Sault d'Artina last week. Thank you. And remember to get back the evaluation forms, please.
Ms. Knowles?
There's not much going on at Sault d'Artina High School right now, but prom took place on the 2nd of April, and it went very well, and everything ran very smoothly. And the student council elections are about to start next week.
Thank you. Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned already, I would have liked to have seen a different outcome tonight, but what's done is done. Joe, I'd like to thank you and everyone that came out to speak on behalf of the program that you were trying to run this summer. I'm hoping that we can still find a way to overcome this and move forward. I'm going to try to be an optimist about this. If establishing a work session and coming up with some form of grant program that we can make accessible to all nonprofits in the area is our path forward, that's our path forward is established tonight. Let's make it happen. So my ask would be, let's try to get something on the books and see if we can get together, brainstorm, put the heads together in the room that need to be there to make it happen. And let's get a grant program put together so we can support fantastic community opportunities like this. And maybe we can still pull something together and make this happen yet. So again, thank you for all your efforts with that. As the mayor said, it was nice to see the street sweepers out and about. I got to do my first bike ride for the season yesterday, and I'm hopefully going to be pivoting to doing some bike commuting here this next week. And I just, I think we're all together in that it's time for some more sunshine. So it's good to see that happening. So, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Thanks again for the folks that came out. You picked a very long meeting agenda, so thank you for sticking with us. I just want to echo the grant symposium. I was not there on behalf of the city, but I'm really optimistic about some of the things that we heard and some of the potential for our department heads. And I think the resolution that came about, about HDR and the grant writing, is really going to make a difference for our Public Works Department and many of our departments and hopefully be able to chip away at the capital list and again, improve that quality of life for everybody. So that's not going to be overnight by any stretch. You know, hopefully in five, six, seven, 10 years, granted, anybody can get materials to build anything or do anything like that. We'll see some good things here in the city. Thanks, Breck. Appreciate that. I want to echo the mayor's comments on that. That's all I've got.
Ms. Hutchings?
Well, definitely thanks to Breck, because what would we do without her? And again, thank you guys for coming and giving us your point of view. I am just very tied into having a grant process, and I think that's the most important thing. And hopefully, we can work something out in the next, you know, few weeks so that there is a process out there for you. And that's all I have.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, executive session. There is no need for one. And number 15, meeting announcements. April 18th, 2022, Library Advisory Board Meeting at 5:15 has been canceled. April 27th, 2022, City Council Meeting at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And having no further items on the agenda, we are adjourned.